At 5:34, we'll call the meeting to order. Number two, the approval of the minutes, meeting of April the 5th, 2023 meeting. We have a motion?
I wasn't there. I shouldn't second it. Who was there?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second for the April 5th, 2023 meeting. Ready for the question? Excuse me?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yes, for tonight.
Oh, okay. I guess to second this then, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's it.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it, motion carry. Number three, subdivision and land development. A, request a time extension for meeting. The conditions of approval of 777 New Holland Avenue, final subdivision plan.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to provide you a background about these requests. So, the subdivision plan for 777 New Holland Ave. was approved on April 20th, 2022. The developer with his consultant has satisfied most of the conditions of planning commission approval, except for the posting of the financial security and providing water easement agreement. The consultant, on behalf of his client, requesting a time extension for 90 days until July 18th, 2023. City staff recommend approving the request. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. I'm ready for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Ayes have it, motion carry. B, introductory presentation by ELA for Park City Center subdivision plan.
Cheryl Love with ELA Group. Bill Cassidy is also here, land use attorney on this project as well. Frank Poland with Park City was expected, so in case he walks in. He is the senior facilities manager and has been for an extended period of time out at Park City Center. This project, the intent is to create separate lots, a total of four. The main portion of the Park City Center would remain as Lot 1. Lot 2 would be depicted on the plan where BJ's Restaurant currently is. Lot 3 would be created where Longhorn Steakhouse is. And Lot 4 almost is set up as its own current lot, even though it's joined by Deed and whatnot to the full parcel currently, but that would be Olive Garden, Bonefish Grill, DSW Shoes, and Ashley Home Furnishings. So that complex, that complex is, it would be our Lot 4. And this is Frank Poland with, we just got started with Park City Center. The purpose of the plans are really just to create those, those lots in and of themselves. Each property, as you see depicted there, Lots 2, Lots 3, and 4, they're all served by separate sewer lines, individual separate water lines. There are no physical improvements planned to the buildings. It's really just a move for Brookfield Properties, who are the owners of Park City Center, to have the ability for disposition or sale of those lots to others. I believe the intent, however, is for them to remain as they are. We've done a lot of calculations. They are zoning compliant based on lot sizes, impervious areas. We exceed the required number of parking on each of those parcels in the way that we're creating the various lots. So we, we are over our parking requirements, so there are no issues with parking either. So, we've carefully analyzed the sites through coordination with city staff. We have received some review comments. This is a sketch plan that was submitted. And we are looking to provide some street trees. The requirement would be based on linear footage of Plaza Boulevard, which runs up, down, or north on the plan there, and along the property frontages of Harrisburg, Old Harrisburg Pike, Harrisburg Avenue. Those linear photo frontages total up for a street tree requirement. And I believe that is for 77 trees. We are working to try to find a middle ground in that requirement. Clearly, retail centers are, visibility from the street is very important for their success and their continued viability. We have worked with Park City Center and Brookfield Properties. And what you see depicted on that plan and also the enlarged plans in front of you show what we are looking to provide for additional street trees. And then they would have to manage the fee in lieu of for those that we cannot provide. And then they would have to manage the fee in lieu of for those that we cannot provide. There are a number of impediments to placement of all of the required street trees. We have all the typical utility poles, light poles, fire hydrants, and utility lines. There are traffic controls, signal cabinets and whatnot. Kyle, can you switch to the photo board, please?
That would be Lot Number Four.
Right.
Right in the corner.
Near the corner. I know that's a little difficult too, so if you want us to walk that around, we could do that for you. We developed that actually just yesterday, so we did not have that in the slide deck for Mandali. But the idea is open visibility on the plan, particularly Lot Four from the main street. Across the buildings of Lot Four, we could certainly provide trees on the lower part of that plan, right below the long row of buildings there, below Ashley Furniture. We are watching out for visibility for people leaving out the driveways onto Harrisburg Avenue, knowing how busy that is with traffic flow and whatnot. And there's also some taller signage that was installed in, what, twenty-twenty-one?
Twenty-twenty-two, right at the property, property line between the Retirement Village and the Little Conestoga. That's the name of that creek that runs through there, I believe. So also, on Lot Number Four, we have the fire hydrant, which we need to be careful about not planting trees too close to that. And that's also Lot Four where it meets Harrisburg Pike, the slope of the ground is, is pretty steep, too.
So we, we know we have shade tree commission to go in front of and others, but we are, we are looking to turn around, finalize this. We're working on some agreements, particularly between BJ's Restaurant and Longhorn. Each of those ends up having a separate access drive from those existing locations, but clearly there can be some sharing of traffic flow across property lines. Utilities actually kind of extend through some of those properties, even though they're individually served, they do cross over. So Bill Cassidy is working through some of the language for some legal agreements to make sure that those are secured and reviewed by the city and in place properly before these plans would ever get fully through approvals and ready for recording. So we would need to bring this plan in yet as a final plan, be fully reviewed by staff, and then, you know, we'll be back in front of you again. Any questions?
What is the property zoned?
The zoning on the property is, it is currently set up for all of the retail and the commercial uses. It does not permit residential at this point, if that's a thought or a question that you have.
That's where I'm going with it.
Yep.
Why, why subdivide for parcels now? I mean, it makes sense if you have another owner, but in the future, seeing as that's a pretty nice hub where you have a lot of vehicular traffic, is that the intention or even a thought as to how you could enhance that corner?
I can't answer that. They just thought it might be an idea to subdivide. It is a little wonky. There's some land lease deals involved there. Olive Garden, BJ's Brew House, and Longhorn are land lease. Then, I have nothing to do with the building. We take care of the grounds around there. But Ashley Furniture, Bonefish Grill, and DSW, we own the building, and I'm responsible for repairs.
Cool.
Good evening. My name is Bill Cassidy. I just wanted to chime in on that particular question. I think, as most of you know, it's a challenging time for owners of malls such as this and trying to plan for the future and deal with some extraneous pressures that are changing the uses for mall properties. And so I think the impetus behind this is to provide more flexibility for their portfolio. They don't have any intention of changing anything that's going on in those properties at the present time. Haven't even considered that. They just want to have extra flexibility in dealing with what might come down the road in, in this particular economic world that we live in for malls. So that's the primary impetus behind it.
Appreciate it completely. I understand. Was getting excited back here, you know, so I was hopeful, but yeah. Certainly sets up for a potential in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the official zoning is CB-three, Central Business, so.
And maybe some of you already know, but I think Brookfield Properties is interested in exploring and have begun some discussion regarding the remainder of the Park City properties as to what it's going to look like in the future. So, nothing definitive, but they're trying to find out which way they want to go, which might be beneficial, obviously, to Brookfield, but also to the city, so.
They had had some, at the city's request, they'd had some conversations related to the comprehensive plan and, and other things that may be on the horizon, so they, they were open to that discussion. It's not the immediate intent of the current plan from subdividing.
Our company's got multiple divisions, multifamily, office.
So you want to speak into the mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Brookfield has a, has quite a few divisions in real estate. We have a multifamily division, office division. We do heavy infrastructure. So we do a lot of things with real estate.
Speaking to the plan that is up right now, Lot Number Two, closest to the building by the intersection.
Yes.
Okay, where the traffic light is. Does the Red Rose Transit Bus, is that an official stop or does it just drop people there? Because I used to take it right up to that spot and we always would get off in the grass and then go from there. And I'm wondering if that could be addressed in the planning.
I'm not aware of anybody being dropped off there. Farther up Plaza Boulevard, over by our central utility plant, there's a bus stop. And then we also have a bus stop right in front of Cole's Department.
I think it's an unofficial stop where people, in the morning because of the DSW.
If you know the driver, you can get dropped off wherever you are.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. So I was just seeing if that was parked, because it's a little bit of a, I got off there a couple of times and it's a little bit of a slope.
Does that little triangle corner on Lot Four, does that go all the way to the Little Conestoga?
Yes, it does. And our office is also involved in the, working with land studies on that Little Conestoga restoration project. I'm not running that, but others in our office are. And Brookfield Properties and Park City Center has signed an easement agreement secured with them. So it's convenient, it's all in-house, but regardless of that, at ELA Group, that has already been executed, I believe.
Gotcha. So that's already an easement.
Right. And I believe that easement was also recorded through the attorneys that were involved on that project as well.
Okay. Because like on a surface, all this seems to make sense to me right now. My only anxiety is that, you know, once lots start exchanging hands, it could be harder to get certain agreements for projects. So that was, that was what came to mind immediately.
Yeah. Right. And clearly down the future, you guys, you know, whomever, if they do want to make changes, we'll be in here for all the planning and appropriate approvals as may be deemed necessary at that point. Okay? Anything else?
Any further, further questions from the commission?
Mr. Polite, I would like to add something here. As Ms. Love said that we had an opportunity and we sat down with the developer and we shared our vision for this property. And Mr. Smith, City Chief Planner, has something to say here, and I would like to read his statement to you.
Repeat that again, what he said?
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you. So this area is really very important, a commercial center for the city and which require additional planning. The city is working on it. It's a comprehensive plan. And on May twenty-fourth, we will be presenting, it will be presenting its first draft policies and map. The city has given the Park City Mall area careful attention and will be providing a place-based planning policy statement for future development. This area clearly require a long-term vision for best outcome. And we will look forward to working with the developer to achieve that best outcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, number three. Garcia? introductory presentation by ELA for six-forty South Franklin Street. Thaddeus Stevens' subdivision and land development plan.
Yes. Kyle, you had additional handouts as well? Cheryl Love with ELA Group again. Dr. Timothy Bianchi with Thaddeus Stevens is here as well. He'll give a brief introduction on some things in a moment. The site itself is located, Chesapeake is on the right-hand side of the plan, which is north South Franklin, along the lower part of the plan or the east side. Far at the back end is Sasuke Hill Street. And then in the center on that plan is existing Stevens Avenue. There is a fifty-foot right-of-way through there that is a non-improved right-of-way. So that would actually be across the top edge of the plan on this drawing. A portion of that, approximately halfway back from the Chesapeake Street Inn, is currently paved in an existing condition, not fully improved. The existing lots, it is on the second sheet of the handouts. The current lots are a little irregular shaped. The idea of this is to create some more uniform lots. And Lot One at the front, or my right-hand side on that plan along Chesapeake, will not be developed at this point by Thaddeus. They are in discussions with potentially providing that to a neighborhood group. And then the current plan shows two narrower lots, Lots Two and Three, to develop a semi-attached unit, and then the remaining lands would be Lot Four at this point. At this point, if Dr. Bianchi could come up, he can speak to you a little bit about how these projects are set up and why they're important to Thaddeus as far as their students.
Good evening. Joe Wysock, who is part of the foundation, Thaddeus Stevens College Foundation, was going to talk in behalf of the foundation and what they do in terms of represent, you know, the college. Joe's tough shoes to fill. Joe is six-six, and I'm five-six. So I'm going to do my best to fill Joe's shoes, but in any case. The foundation, over the last fifty years, has purchased properties in which then the college students, their second year, can embark on a hands-on project. And just to give you a little, a little history about Thaddeus Stevens College, hands-on learning is very important to our, to our students. In fact, going through an accreditation process, our accrediting commission has tried to make Thaddeus Stevens College more of a liberal arts college. And the college, we've, we stayed steadfast and true to our students because, again, we feel that for students to be productive, when they graduate, whether it be carpentry, whether it be masonry, whether it be plumbing, electrical, HVAC, you know, any of the traditional construction technical trades, we feel it's important that they have the hands-on as well as the minds-on. They have the theory, but it's important that they engage in real-life, real-life work. Again, Joe Wysock graduated from Thaddeus Stevens College in two thousand and six in the carpentry program. He went on to Penn Tech to get a bachelor's degree. And he said he never would have went on to get a bachelor's degree if it wasn't for the experience that he had at Thaddeus Stevens College. And realizing that not only can he perform the carpentry skills, but he also then realized he had the academic skills. So when you look at this project that we're embarking on, it's so important to our students. When you look at the program, we have about a hundred and fifty-plus students involved in this hands-on, a hands-on project. So that's a quick, a quick overview of what, what we're looking at doing, so.
So the project itself is set up. We do have a stormwater basin. It doesn't read real well on this plan, but it's in the center of the property. We have calculated numbers of street trees based on frontages. Clearly, there's a significant number there. We are, this was the former site of a Shell recycling building. That, that was demolished with permits through the city last, this past summer. So there are some existing driveways that still occur down onto Franklin Street. This plan will remove those driveways, pull that curbing out, put proper vertical curb in, new concrete sidewalks. And there would be two real standard bi-tuminous driveways. These units have garages that sit inside the building. So our driveways are situated that way because of the way the current design is. City review staff and comments are looking to see if we can modify future plans to possibly join a driveway in the center. This, this building plan was also done by architectural students. It's at Building Codes Review. So they've submitted their plans already, so we're a bit far down the road for this first set of units. But we would be also providing new utilities, and we've worked with city departments. They would, the water line would connect to, all the way through Stevens Street to both ends. The sewer line would exit the one unit here and flow back to Skook Hill Avenue. And those would eventually, they're sized for becoming full-service lines for the city along through that zone. We have received traffic commission approvals for the driveway removals along Franklin and for the two driveways from these units. Last evening, we also received shade tree commission approval with a few caveats that we will look at. There's an existing large tree that they would like us to try to preserve. It falls immediately between those two driveways during construction. We'll have to see if it's evident whether that can be preserved. And if not, based on the diameter or the caliber on that tree, we would be providing sixteen additional trees in place of that one tree to be removed. And that is actually included in that tree count already. So the tree count that's on this plan provides for lot frontages as well as what we were hoping to receive approval to fully remove that tree. But we will work back and forth to see if we can, can save it in any way as we physically get construction moving onsite. We've provided some additional trees on the internal portion of the site, those four. Eventually, you may wonder why we have all that white green space on the Lot Four. This site is set up that we can continue to develop a total of eight units. So we can continue to develop those other lots. And, and that will, over years, support the Thaddeus students programs to, to build these units. So as the foundations are prepared, in August, their school students return and they will be, you know, this is their program. This is their school year program is to build. So we've been working with the city back and forth between the unimproved area of Stevens Avenue. We will continue to do that. The plan in front of Kyle here shows those trees in yellow. The purpose for that is, it is very important that we keep this plan moving for the current duplex unit, our semi-attached units, to serve this program. So we are posting financial security to cover those trees, but we do have a request that's into the city, you'll see that again when we come back, to defer the installation of those, to allow the financial security to be held, but to install those when the street is fully improved through Stevens Avenue. So the college will work with the city on the development. So the college will work with the city on the development of that to have a fully improved street through within this zone. So as more units come on, there will be a full street out there for that, with the sidewalks, the proper trees, parking, et cetera. So there's lots ahead of us. We're just trying to focus on keeping this plan as simple as possible at this point to get it moving through. We've had two rounds of review comments. We're expecting another very soon. We will turn that around quickly again. And we'll hope to be back in front of you in the very near future again as we clean up any last little items and get this ready for the students with summer construction of site work and prepping that foundation area for the units. I think I hit the highlights. Any specific questions?
So I know this is an R2 zone right now.
It is, it is actually, it's zoned for the semi-attached units?
Right.
Correct.
Like R2 zone. And across the street is R4.
Correct.
I'm hoping that maybe, because like I love what the program is. Like I think the students getting hands-on work is great. And I'm not gonna try and hold this up because the students need to get their experience. But I guess for consideration to everyone in the room, I'd love to see maybe denser housing projects, especially with the student assistance down the line. Like if we're able to change zoning laws prior to the next construction project, it'd be wonderful if that could be considered.
I'm sure we can continue discussions that may relate to that. It's, the college is pretty, pretty well organized in the way they control the size of those units. There's one in construction right now at the corner of Marshall and Skook Hill. So it's a slightly different design. Each year, the architectural students design units through each of their programs. So although they could cookie-cutter and continue to use, they have students design a new unit. And then based on the size of that, it's, the constructability of it is set up for what's achievable in that one school year. And then Thaddeus will, these will become for sale for the public. I'm not sure if we mentioned that or not, when completed. So the college does not keep them. They look to at least try to break even with their investments in, you know, all the various services and the cost that it takes to get them to the endpoint. But certainly understand your request for additional density.
But I said that knowing that like right now it's not possible.
Correct, correct.
I have two questions. The first one, with the orientation of these buildings, would the postal service be?
We are, actually, as of today, I had proposed some addresses to Cindy McCormick. It doesn't read well, but right across the top, there are individual lots. No one, they really don't use that area for access. They're almost separate little yard areas. Each of those lots does have an address for Stevens Avenue. Initially, we had looked at this site. We did a lot of analysis. And in all honesty, we had intended on focusing towards South Franklin in the very beginnings. There is rock evident if you drive around the corner of Chesapeake and Franklin. It's visible, there's outcrops, we know we're gonna hit it. And the way that the grades are and the way that they fall across the site, it just made sense, there's the old shell plant. It just made sense to have these oriented towards Stevens because of the way everything was falling and the way we'd have to capture stormwater and whatnot. But you can see, you can see what's on site.
Oh, that's perfect. And then for the second question, I think you might've answered it. Because the architectural students every semester, every year are designing that, is that why we didn't actually just put forward all eight locations? I see everything else is there, the openings for future driveways and whatnot. But is that the reason why there's nothing else being put forward today?
No, that is part of it. Also, just the sheer timing of everything was going to be somewhat difficult to put that in. That puts us through a full MPDES permit. We've got lengthy reviews with that. The coordination with the city on the street is something, the back and forth with that, the design of that and so forth, was a bit more complicated than the ability for this current project. We've had this project for a little while, but it's important to know that we're just, we understand, once and done would've been easier.
Well, the quality is always so good. It's worth the wait, don't worry.
Well, there you go. When we do return back to you, the rest of everything will be developed as a chunk. Okay? So we certainly don't want to go through land development as many times as we can help it, also from a costing standpoint. But the next time we return, the rest of all, we have it designed, but from a permitting standpoint, it's just simply was a duration of schedule, so.
So how large is this area in terms of acreage?
The total lot, let me pull that up a second. The total property itself is listed as 1.14 acres in total. Each of the separate lots, Kyle, do you wanna pull that? Right. So these two lots are smaller. We'll be able to put another unit just to the left of that. So if you take the units and you move them over, and then there'll be two more groups on the side. The storm basin will remain green space in the center. We do exceed the lot requirements and the lot depths on all of those. We, however, do need a zoning special exception, which we have filed for, for the driveways to technically be permitted to go to Stevens Avenue because it is a front yard. So we have kind of two front yards at the front end and back of primaries on these, primary and secondary on this lot. So we do have that hearing up and coming as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Any other questions from the commission?
Awesome. Great, we'll return soon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, D.
introductory presentation by DM/A for 211 West James Street, Lombardo's Lot Consolidation and Land Development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Brent Deeter with David Miller Associates. We're here to review the sketch plan for Lombardo's Restaurant expansion with you this evening. What's in front of you is the, basically, the removal plan for the project. The areas in dark red are portions of existing buildings that have been approved for removal. We'll start from the east side and work our way west. The octagonal, half-octagonal area of what is the Penn State Lighting Fixtures Building will be removed. The rear portions of the three-row homes along West James Street will be removed. The rear portion of the Roseman, I'm sorry, Mandali, I'm still going along West James. The rear portion of what is the Roseman Building will be removed. And then a small portion of the existing Lombardo's Building on the south side will be removed. The other items that are highlighted in the pink color are areas of existing pavement that will be removed to allow for the future expansion. All, currently, the project's site's approximately 0.88 acres in area. It's comprised of eight individual lots that will all be consolidated into one lot. If you want to go to the next slide, Mandali, that would be great. Just a real brief overview of what's happening. The existing restaurant's gonna remain, and that's shown centrally located off of Harrisburg Avenue. The existing kitchen will be renovated and expanded to the south. And then heading east, there's gonna be a proposed deli area, a chef's lounge where people will be able to go in for a private cooking session with the chef from Lombardo's and have that meal there. There's a small cigar lounge in that area. The space that's resultant between what will be the renovated Penn State Lighting Fixtures Building and the existing restaurant will be a seasonal outdoor dining area that'll front onto Harrisburg Avenue. The existing triplexes will remain. They are going to have some minor renovations done to the porches. And then the existing Roseman Building, I'm not exactly sure what's gonna happen with that at this point. They're still reviewing that with the Historic Commission. It has been, I'm not sure the status. But currently, that's gonna be remaining. The existing parking area that is south of the Penn State Lighting Fixtures Building will be repaved. The existing entrance to that will be reduced to 24 feet, creating additional separation between North Water Street and the entrance to that parking area. Currently, that parking area is approximately 48 feet wide, a large depressed entrance to that whole area. And then there's additional proposed parking on the west side of the site between the triplex buildings and the Roseman Building. A majority of the sidewalk and curb along Harrisburg Avenue, North Water Street and West James Street will be removed. The city streetscape guidelines will be followed along Harrisburg Avenue, creating the brick band and the required street trees. There is the, along West James, we are proposing a four-foot tree lawn area between the curb and the five-foot sidewalk, where the five-foot sidewalk can be maintained. In the areas in front of the existing buildings along West James Street, the triplex and the Roseman Building, there are porches that do come out. In those areas, that grass strip will be reduced so that we can maintain a five-foot sidewalk. On North Water Street, there will be a small grass strip between the curb and the five-foot sidewalk. And in that area, there's not enough room to keep the sidewalk, a four-foot grass strip between the curb and the property line. And the three required street trees there, we would be proposing those on private property. And then we would propose to enter into the street tree agreement with the city since those would not be located within the right-of-way. There is an enclosed trash area on the west side of the expanded kitchen. That's generally in the area where trash is currently. It's not, it's not in an enclosure, but this would be within an enclosure. Trash would be scheduled for pickup before the restaurant opens. And there would be a straight shot from the shared entrance between Lombardo's and the medical office building where a trash truck could come through there. There are five existing parking spaces there. And it's proposed that they would be signed for no parking between Monday through Friday, between 6:30 a.m. and 11 a.m., which is when the restaurant is not open so that the trash truck and deliveries could come through there. We do have to go to the Shade Tree Commission yet. We also have to go to the Traffic Commission for the new access point. It's along West James. We're also removing an access point along Harrisburg Avenue that's currently in front of the Penn State Lighting Fixtures Building. The property is currently served with multiple water laterals that will be taken out of commission. The entire site will be served with just one water lateral. Stormwater is proposed underneath the proposed parking area on the west side of the project site. It's an infiltration gallery that will handle the increase in the impervious surface. That's the project in a very overview scenario. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those at this point.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
The entrance to the deli.
Yes.
Is that gonna be from the James Street side?
It is. So if you are looking at the south side of that expansion, you can see there's like a bump into the building there, and that's the entrance to the deli. You can almost see the architectural plan showing through on the rendering. But if you would enter the deli there, there is, there would be deli cases and also a bar. And then between the outdoor dining area and that deli area would be garage doors that would open up on days that have good weather. And then that whole area would be one big open area that would flow from the outdoor dining area into the deli. And then people would be able to leave the deli either out towards Harrisburg Avenue or back out towards West James. And then they could go to North Water Street or wherever they wanted to from that point.
Another question. How many homes are being removed or residences?
None. There's currently, the triplex unit is there, and those are currently vacant. And then there's the Roseman Building, which is vacant as well. But they will remain residential. So there's currently three dwelling, four dwelling units, and they'll be maintained as four dwelling units.
So is there no upper-level residential component to this?
There is not.
Was there at one point?
At one point, probably a year ago, they were considering a multi-story apartment building in that location, but financially, it didn't make sense at this point.
Okay. It's a single-story structure then?
It's a single-story structure, yeah.
Who's the architect? Who is the architect?
RLPS.
Okay.
Thanks. To bounce off that question, actually, is there, like, is the structure of the building going to be designed in a way to potentially?
No.
No?
There's no...
Just stick?
Yeah, there's, it will not be designed for future vertical expansion.
Okay. And then my other question is, was any traffic analysis done?
Yeah, we did an extensive parking study. We went to the zoning hearing board to have a reduction in the number of onsite parking and to utilize off-site parking. And as part of our final plan application, we did include IT trip gen numbers. And, you know, quality dining, the numbers are fairly low. I think our highest peak inbound trip was on a Saturday evening between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m., and it was 48 trips. So it was below the 50-trip requirement for a full traffic impact analysis.
Gotcha, okay. So is the deli only gonna be served from James Street? I know you said that the garage will roll up and everything, so...
If you were in the restaurant or at the outdoor dining area or walking down Harrisburg Avenue, you could walk right through the seasonal outdoor dining area into the deli.
Into the, okay. In all seasons, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
The main entrance for it is off of West James, but you could easily come in from the existing restaurant or the outdoor seasonal dining.
Okay. Neat. So, I'm sorry, this is my neighborhood, so I'm like, I'm very interested. You have a proposed shared kitchen.
Yes.
But the kitchen in the existing restaurant is kind of towards the southwest of the plan right now.
It is. So they're renovating that and then also expanding into that area that's labeled proposed shared kitchen. So the shared kitchen would serve the existing restaurant, which served the deli and also the outdoor dining area.
Okay.
They're offering different types of service for the outdoor dining area, restaurant, deli area, more of a casual dining experience. And then the existing restaurant would be maintained as it currently is for Lombardo's.
Okay.
Any, the additional parking, how many, how many spaces additional?
There are 15 additional parking spaces proposed on that western parking lot. We did pick up one additional space in the area south of what is the Penn State Lighting Fixtures Building. There's currently nine there, and there could be 10, but there's an existing ADA ramp in one of the spaces, and that would be removed. They do have a lease for off-site parking with the medical office building to the west. So they can use those after 5:00 p.m.
Okay.
Because that's when the majority of their patients and users are out of that facility. And Lombardo's can use those spaces.
Any further questions from the commission?
I have a question. Will this proposed outdoor dining be fenced?
Yeah, so they're planning along, it's two levels. I forget the exact difference in elevation between the upper level and the lower level. It may be two feet. They are proposing a brick wall along there that will have landscaping. They are, they are proposing a brick wall along there that will have landscaping on the Harrisburg Avenue side and a living green wall. And then on the other side, there's going to be a water feature for, for the dining experience. And there'll be a, a gate and an entrance to get in at two different locations.
And it is ADA accessible?
It is all ADA accessible, that is correct. There, there's actually a ramp between the two levels right there, yes.
I have another question for this dumpster location.
Yes.
Trash collection. You know, the, the fire truck, I assume that this area are going to be accessible from Harrisburg, from Water Street and James Street, but this area is the only accessible through the parking lot. So I was worried that maybe we don't have enough space here to...
That's, there's 24 feet there.
24 feet?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. So it looks narrower because the, out, the trash collection area there, the doors are shown to open. Those, those would normally be shut, and during the day, there's a man door so people can get into the trash area to put refuse in there without having to open the doors. Then when they come to pick up the trash, the doors would be open, and that would be in off, off-peak hours. So there is 24 feet clear through that area.
Thank you for clarification.
Yep.
Okay, any other further questions?
Thank you for your time. We look forward to moving forward with the project.
Thank you.
Okay. Number four, redevelopment authority of the city of Lancaster, RACL. Planning commission recommends appropriate use of 234 East Fulton Street.
Mr. Chairman, this property at 234 East Fulton Street, zoned R4, and was certified as blighted by commission on April 5th. RACL seeks planning commission recommendation for appropriate use for this property, and city recommends residential and/or commercial would be appropriate use for this building.
Okay.
Mr. Kager, what was the recommendation again?
Residential and/or commercial.
Can I motion that we follow that recommendation?
If only I could second it.
Yes.
So currently, it's just residential?
Yes.
Right.
But if you look at the ground floor, it seems that previously was used as a commercial.
You buy that big window.
Okay, got it. So we have a motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
And a second? For the question? All in favor, let it known be by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Ayes have it, motion carried.
Comprehensive plan update?
Mr. Chairman, there, there is no formal update for this project, for the comprehensive plan because, you know, as you know, you're, all are invited to the event on 21st of this month for more updates.
Four o'clock.
And, and I would like to add that so far, we have over 300 registration.
Wow.
Yes. And the event will start at 4:30. And we have a small booklet, 60 pages. Yes, will be available.
You said a small what?
Second.
You said a small...
A small booklet.
Right.
Yeah. So at 5:30, there will be a formal presentation, a poem presentation, and discussion panel. And a short open house will follow that event, and it will end at 7:00 p.m.
Great. End at 7:00, 7:00 p.m. Yeah, I volunteered to, to be there.
So what you're saying is we should be there by 5:00, the latest? Does that make sense?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
The, the open house start at 4:30, so...
I got my wife a ticket, so if I can get her there by 5:00, that's my, that's my asking.
Right.
That, that is my question.
Okay. All right. Any other business?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other businesses.
Here we none?
Yeah, I think so.
Public participation? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
You have a motion and a second for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, meeting ends at 6:29, 6:29.